All right, City Attorney Enes, is there any reportable action from the closed session?
There's no reportable action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're not taking a brief recess because we wouldn't go right into it then. Good evening, and I'd like to call our regular City Council meeting back to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, I would like to ask for Shahad Shaheed from the Spiritual Assembly of the Bahiza Laguna Nigal to come forward for the invocation, and then we'll have Daisy Girl Scout Troop 7582 and Brownie Girl Scout Troop 5476 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
O thou forgiving God, these servants are turning to thy kingdom and seeking thy grace and bounty. O God, make their hearts good and pure, in order that they may become worthy of their love. Purify and sanctify the spirits, that the light of the Son of the Reality may shine upon them. Purify and sanctify the eyes, that they may perceive thy light. Purify and sanctify the ears, in order that they may hear the call of thy kingdom. O God, my God, cast upon this gathering the glances of thy loving kindness. Keep safe each and all in thy custody and under thy protection. Send down upon these souls thy heavenly blessings. Immerse them in the ocean of thy mercy, and quicken them through the breath of the Holy Spirit. O Lord, bestow thy gracious aid and confirmation upon this just government. This country lieth beneath the sheltering shadow of thy protection, and this people is in thy service. O Lord, confer upon them thy heavenly bounty, and render the outpourings of thy grace and favor copious and abundant. Suffer this esteemed nation to be held in honor and enable it to be admitted into thy kingdom. Thou art the powerful, the omnipotent, the merciful, and thou art the generous, the beneficent, the Lord of grace abounding.
Audience attention, color guard advance. Color guard present the colors. Would the honorable Mayor, City Council members and audience please join the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audience may be seated.
Thank you, and girls stay down there, we're gonna come on up. Well, I have to start by thanking you all because I put on a couple pounds with those cookies.[654.25][654.25](Laughter) But it was worth it, it was definitely worth it. Just two of them, yeah, just two cookies, two boxes. Anyways, I want to first of all thank all the parents for coming tonight. If you could stand up if you're a parent of one of these girls, let's give you a hand, great. We know how hard it is and how busy your schedule is, so the fact that you're there to get them to where they need to be is great. And we also have our troop leader up here. Very good. I'm gonna go ahead and give you the mic, and if you want to say your name, and your school, and your grade, and then we'll pass it on. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sophia Adamo, and I go to Marion Bergerson, and I am in third grade.
Hi, my name is Ella, I go to Bergerson, I am in first grade.
Hi, my name's Leisamansky, and I go to Bergerson, and I am in third grade.
Hi, my name is Sophia, and I go to Bergerson Elementary School, and I am in third grade.
Hello, my name is Coral, and I go to Marion Bergerson, and I am in first grade.
Hi, my name is Mia Isabella Alfred, and I go to Temple Valley Christian, and I'm in kindergarten.
Hi, my name is Ava, and I go to Bergerson, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Amber Alfred, and I'm the troop leader for troop 5476 and 7582.
Okay, we're gonna take some pictures, so parents if you want to come up and get some photos, please do.
Color guard dismissed.
Good job.[806.11][806.11](Applause) Good job, girls, just following straight that way. All right, our next presentation is for the Persian holiday, Nourruz, and we're gonna have our mayor, Pratim, to talk a little bit about it, and where are you going to take this?
Very good. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. As a tradition in the city of Laguna Nigal, over the next two weeks, I'll be in the cities of Beverly Hills and Los Angeles, more specifically, West LA, and also City Irvine, presenting the resolution to the Persian American communities, so happy Nourruz and happy new year.
All right, thank you. And with that, we can adjourn back to... All right, that concludes our presentations, so we will now return to the dais for public communications. Public communications, any person wishing to address the City Council will need to complete and present a gold-colored request form over here, and they'll be back on the wall, to the city clerk. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the door. Please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each person to speak. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Gomez, are there any other requests, speaker forms?
Yes, Mayor, I'm bringing one up to you now.
Okay, great, thanks. Is that for the discussion item or general? And again, this is just for public comment, but we'll get to the other ones for the discussion. All right, if we could please have Joanne Curtin up, and if you want to just say your name and your address, thank you so much, Ms. Curtin.
Hi, I am Joanne Curtin. I live at 31265 Palma Drive in Laguna Nigal, and I'm representing Save Our Library Committee, and I have a comment to mention tonight here. We requested a copy of the RFP, which is the Request for Proposal for the city center whatever, city center today. We did receive that proposal, and we have looked through the proposal, and the proposal does not include demolish the library. We are trying to save the library, and we're, you know, we're hoping that we can make some kind of an impact. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, Ms. Curtin. All right, at that time, I'm going to close public comment, and we're gonna move around, instead of going to our consent calendar, I'm gonna move to discussion items, so we have people that are speaking, we'll get you in and out a little bit faster. Our next item is discussion item number one, and that is the pilot program to evaluate potential modifications to the city zoning regulations and temporary residential real estate signs. Community Director Orduna, please provide a staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. The staff report on this item will be provided by Senior Planner Eric List.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. In early fall of 2019, the city received complaints from at least a half dozen residents and several Realtors about open house sign blight. Staff began a proactive enforcement effort, which included picking up signs, however, because of the sheer number of signs, staff switched to an educational approach, which included calling or texting a Realtor listed on the sign and informing them of the current sign regulations. In January this year, enforcement was suspended due to the concerns from the real estate community. Since then, staff has started a dialogue with individual Realtors and the Orange County Association of Realtors about potential changes to sign regulations. With the endorsement of the City Council, staff will continue to work with the real estate community on a pilot program to develop and test open house sign regulations. Based on the results of the pilot program, staff will draft an ordinance that will be brought to the planning commission for recommendation to the City Council. This concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions? Otherwise, I'll go to the comments and then we can come back. Good with that? Great. All right, as I call your name, come on up, please repeat your name and your address, please. We'll start with Dave Klinkerson. Wilkinson, sorry, it looked like a K. Oh, you've got a fancy W.
It's with a W.
Very fancy W. You haven't seen my writing.
Hi, Dave Wilkinson, 29612 Sariana, in Laguna Nigal. I've had the privilege of working in real estate for 29 years now, and Laguna Nigal, I saw it change from not being a city to becoming a city, and I've been fortunate enough and privileged enough to sell over almost 500 homes and almost a half billion dollars worth of real estate. One thing we find is Laguna Nigal's changing quite a bit, our demographics are, and you know your demographics really well, we have an older resident here, and a lot of them don't use technology sometimes to find open houses, so that's a big thing to take a look at. Years ago, we had an issue with signage, so we actually met, I don't know if you remember, Bob Leonard, Bob Margolis, and myself went in and met with Bob Leonard, we came up with a sign rule. And the thing is, we tried to self-police the signage, and at times, we failed, but, you know, we need signs to get property shown by people. A lot of these homes are top of the hill, all over the place, and mean, a lot of people are staying in hotels locally, and they come to visit, and we've got such a wonderful city, we can expound upon these people that just drop into our open houses. It's all about our home values, and we want to keep those values up. A third of our people that are selling are moving out of state because of tax situation, so we really need signage. Two signs does not get people up to our homes. That doesn't work, so we need signage.
Thank you very much. Wayne Chang?
Thank you for inviting me up here, my name is Wayne Chang, address is 23811 Eliso Creek Road, suite number 170. So, yeah, you know, to be very honest, when the two sign rule came out a few months ago, we were, probably a little bit longer than that, but we were very surprised, but, you know, the city was very, very cooperative with us, no signs were actually pulled or confiscated or thrown in the dumpster like some other cities do, so we really do appreciate that, and the sign enforcer was really friendly with us, so I just wanted to say thank you for, thank you for doing that. Just on the general topic of signs, like David said earlier, we do need more than two signs, sometimes two signs does not make it out of the immediate neighborhood, especially if you're in an internal location, you probably need somewhere from half a dozen to sometimes maybe 10 signs at a time, and open houses are very important. A large portion of buyers do go to open houses, millennials oftentimes these days don't use regular agents to schedule appointments, and they almost exclusively go to open houses, so specific and unique signage is important to easily follow and not clog up traffic. But I also wanted to say, Eric doing a great job reaching out to us, and just having that open dialogue, I was actually very pleasantly surprised to receive a call from the city. At first, I thought, oh man, I must have maybe a whole bunch of signs in the dumpster or in trouble, but that turned out not to be the case, it was a very nice call, and we do appreciate as a community, a real estate community, having that cooperation with the city, and coming up with, you know, a mutually agreeable plan, so thank you for that, and we're happy to, you know, work together on that.
Thank you for your comment. Terry Bruno?
Hi, I'm Terry Bruno, 2955 Kensington Drive. I received a text on October 13th, 2019, and I was shocked. It says, "Good afternoon, Terry, my name is RJ, I work for the city of Laguna Nigal. I see you have open house signs for an open house you're having today. I just want to reach out and let you know we only allow two open house signs off property. I did see more than two open house signs. Can you please pick them up before 2:00 PM today?" And I was shocked when I received this, because I tell my family how to put them up, I tell them the rules, I tell everybody that helps me the rules, so when they told me that there were new guidelines, I was really surprised. I feel like the guidelines that they sent me, they did not put a date on the bottom of these new guidelines, which I thought was weird. The original guidelines that I go by say August 23rd, 2011, and there's no date on the new ones. I don't, is that, I don't know if that's the reason why, or why that would be, but I think it's ridiculous that two signs, we can't get anyone to our open houses. We do our best to not put them right on the street, we don't put them in the middle. I'm really conscious of how I put my signs out, I make sure they're straight, so everything to get our people to see our open houses, it's critical to us, so whatever you can do to help us get more signs other than two, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chippy Kelsir?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you honorable council members, and honorable mayor, of course. I am a board member with Orange County Realtors, and they asked me to come here to speak on their behalf, and I am also a Laguna Nigal resident, and what I'd first like to say is, residents of Laguna Nigal and, and that and comes with capital A-N-D, Realtors hate to see signs clogging up our community. So on that, we both agree, we all agree with that, so we understand, we understand the magnitude of what's going on. However, we would just like to say that we received this draft that Eric, Brian, I have to give you kudos, Eric, he came to our Laguna Nigal broker's preview, he came with the best attitude, we are so hopeful that everybody is gonna get along to let us continue making our living, and also work together with you, and then I had the privilege of meeting a wonderful young person at lunch today, Sandy Rains, it was great to meet her while I was having lunch. But the thing that we really need here are the Realtor, here are the must haves that we must have. We must have where it is clear directions to an open house, so it's great that it's like every direction changed, so that's fair, but at least, you know, at least at every direction change, we should have that instead of just two signs, so maybe you may need four or five. And the other thing that Eric was very, he learned this, and he was very understanding of it, we need to have, like if me and Dave Wilkinson had open houses on the same block, we should not have to have like one sign pointing in that one direction, because if Dave's open house was from 12 to 4, and mine was from 1 to 5, we take our sign, so there would be no coverage for that one hour. So that is a need, that we have to have signs pointing to each direction, and every Realtor to every open house should have their own sign. So that is a need, and, oh, the other need is, we have to have on every corner, since we can't be in the middle of the block, we have to have a possibility of placing a sign. So, you know, sometimes there is only concrete there, or sometimes if there's no grass, we have to have some way of placing our sign to show that direction change, so we have to work together to get that done, so, you know, in order not to have people going and looking and getting frustrated when they're looking for their home.
You have 10 seconds.
Okay, and, and the last thing that I wanted to say is with the colors, I'm gonna stand up here, I'm gonna make kind of a joke, but, man, we can't be prejudiced calling things one sign, one green, we have to allow different colors of the sign, let creativity, so let's not talk about green, I hate green, thank you.[1653.71][1653.71](Laughter)
Unless it's an emerald.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's where you gotta stop. Bob DePia?
My name is Bob DePia, I'm with Keller Williams Realty, I live at 14 Brene in Laguna Nigal. I've been a resident of Laguna Nigal for 27 years, and I just joined all these great veterans back here in this industry just two years ago. I do sell, I was, they covered a lot of really good stuff, I'm not gonna cover what they covered already. I do sell properties in a controlled community, and these are some of the things I've found that have worked. You know, going to a particular color or design of a sign is fine, as long as you work with the Realtors to make sure we get on those signs the kinds of identifiers to us. The particular community I'm in right now, the person's name or the Realtor's name is so small that you really can't tell who it is, they're just kind of blindly following signs and don't know who they're going to go see. In that community, they do allow signs on every corner, so you can make a lot of changes. I don't know if you guys have been driving around much in Laguna Nigal, but we don't have any straight streets. I live in Marina Hills, and if you want to get to Marina Hills, it's impossible to find a home that's all the way at the top of the hill, or I've sold some homes in Sterling, Nigal, you can't get anyone there, because, I mean, it's just so far up, so far back, that's difficult to get there. Another thing that has worked well for us is time limits, you know, putting them up at 9 o'clock and making sure they're down by 5 or 6. This is a real senior community that I'm doing a lot of business in, so they like them down by 5 o'clock, but around here, a lot of us hold them up until 5, so 6 o'clock might be a good suggestion. But we, you know, we are very responsible people, we spend a lot of money on these signs, we put them up and make sure they look nice, they're not just put up willy-nilly, you know, point in odd directions, if I see someone's just kind of crooked, I usually straighten it for them, but it's the kind of thing that we need to have the drive-by public, just like when you're in the grocery store and someone you're, you're in the grocery store and someone drives by and says, "Oh, I need to pick up some milk." We need those folks who are, you know, starting to look for a home to come in and meet us because, you know, like Dave said, keep their property values up. You know, some of these people are in homes that are Prop 13 and when they get sold over, they're going back to new tax bases and that's a big plus for the city for your, for your tax base. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, sir. Matt Clements?
Good evening. To be back with everybody, Madam Mayor, council members, staff. Thank you. My name is Matt Clements, 29805 Andrea Way, Laguna Niguel. And I absolutely am here to support on behalf of the Orange County Realtors Board of Directors, of which I'm a member and the immediate past president for the Realtors as well. And I do support the pilot program to evaluate the potential modifications to the city zoning regulations for the temporary residential real estate signs and recommend to council that we endorse on the initiation of this pilot program and evaluate the modifications to the city zoning regulations for temporary real estate signs. And thank you for working with our Government Affairs Director, Dorissey. She's very grateful for you. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Tamra. And thank you, past mayor, for working with us as well. Council members, very grateful for you. And without any further ado, we would just ask that you support this and approve the pilot program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Bill Sundin?
My name is Bill Sundin. I'm with Berkshire Hathaway and a member of Orange County Realtors. My thoughts are more conceptual and that is that things used to work well here and I've been practicing for 15 years in Laguna Niguel. And I think it's possible that good judgment was lost in, in a few corners and that it might have caused a feeling that things had to be very restrictive in order to rein people in. The reality is, I believe that most Realtors, not only do they practice good judgment, but they are not happy with those agents that are overly enthusiastic. Some of them because they're new to the business and some because they are hyper marketers. But, I think that if we return to a position of good judgment, it used to be that we were restricted to having two signs on the scenic parkways. And I, I don't know what the terminology was, but what it amounted to was only as many signs as needed to give people good guidance to, to an open house. That's something that I think that most Realtors would like all Realtors to subscribe to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Arna Freeman? Sit down, we got you right back up, huh? No worries.
Okay. I'm Arna Friedman with EXP Realty. I've been a Laguna Niguel resident since 1995.
Could you give us your address too, please?[805.82][805.82](Knocking)
That's it.[808.48][808.48](Laughter)
Sorry, Lori.
That's all right.
Didn't want to adjust.
No worries. Thank you.
It's 24982 Barclay Lane, Laguna Niguel. And I've been a Realtor in the town actively practicing since 1995 and open houses have become a more integral part of our business because the buyers will actually go online and go to open houses. I, my experience is 70% of the buyers actually find the house at open house and then call their agent to buy it. And I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself because I didn't hear the other speakers and I'm out of breath. But, multiple signs are really important for the safety of all the drivers in the town. We have a lot of hills in Laguna Niguel and if the signs are not, the drivers are not given enough notice with enough signs, they come upon an intersection, let's say hung Golden Lantern, and they have to stop suddenly to make a turn. That is not safe and it doesn't give them enough time to make that turn. So, I don't want to repeat, but I think that our citizens and owners of property deserve to have their home exposed as much as possible. And open houses are one of the marketing tools that all agents offer their clients. So, I think with the tax revenue that's generated by more sales and the more activity that goes on in a neighborhood, the prices generally rise. So, that's what I have to say tonight. I'm sorry my breath was rushing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Sarah Ward?
Hi. Hi, I'm a little under the weather. I don't normally sound this way, but I'm here to support.
I'm right with you.
The Realtor community. My name is Sari Ward. I live at 4 Alcott in Laguna Niguel. I've been a resident for almost 10 years. I'm an active Realtor in Laguna Niguel, predominantly 80% of my business is in the city. And I find it very valuable for Realtors to hold open houses. You'd be surprised that people, when they come in, I'll usually poll how they found out about the open house. And a lot of them do see it online, but many will say they followed the signs. And the way a buyer, you know, the evolution of how a buyer may find a house, they might start off in Aliso Viejo and then maybe they're not finding the types of amenities they might like or the homes they might like. And then they might meander to another area and not ever actually imagine themselves there until they find their way there. And the way they're going to find their way there sometimes is signs. So, it can't be just that they're finding it online or maybe from their Realtor, but signs are really critical. And the more signs we can have within reason, the better. I'm, I'm all for putting a limit that makes sense. I don't think 30 signs is necessary for an open house, but I don't think two is adequate either. And in the community that I do a lot of business in, Beacon Hill, there's no way that two signs can get anybody to a home that's way up the hill. So, you have homeowners that are going to be at a disadvantage if they're not anywhere near the bottom of either Golden Lantern or Niguel. And it's going to be hard to explain to homeowners that their house isn't going to be advertised as well as maybe somebody who's down the bottom of the hill. So, I don't know if, if it's fair. And I don't know if we could say that, you know, values are going to go up in homes that aren't getting adequate signage if the ones down the street are getting less signage. So, that's what I have to say about that. And thank you so much for having us.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate you feel better. Do we have any more communication? No, Mayor, that was all. We're going to close public communication on discussion item one. And I'm just going to say a few words and we'll go over to the councils. First of all, I want to thank everyone for bringing this to our attention. Linda Fong, I got a call right away and I think that the council and the staff jumped on this immediately. We're, we're business friendly, but we're also Realtor friendly. And we want to make sure that, you know, business is important and we want to be able to make sure that we can get these houses sold. So, thank you for this. I personally think this is a great idea for us to put a pilot program together. I think like any business, there are bad actors out there and, you know, it doesn't help you. So, I think this is what we can do is making people accountable, give you what you need so that you can do your job, the tools, and move forward. So, I know that you work tough, you know, and giving good ideas to make it work well. So, I'll go ahead and start with Council Rains. I'm going to assume that you're going to talk, so.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I have a question first because one of the speakers brought up August 23rd, 2011. Does anybody know where that came from? Any of our staff?
Councilmember Rains?
No, I mean, I'm just asking our staff if they know where that came.
I believe the date stated is the date on a, on a handout. It's not a code provision.
Okay.
But it's a handout that was used to informally relay certain sign regulations. I can tell you that as far as the zoning code, the standards that are currently in place, which include the limit of two signs have been, were adopted as part of the original adoption of the zoning ordinance. So, this dates all the way back to almost City Incorporated. So, these are not new standards that are at issue. However, from a staff perspective, we, we have identified that they are overly restrictive. I think that the comments received are, are on point and we're working with the real estate community to find a more reasonable solution that can accommodate the Realtors while also ensuring that we do not, that we address the sign blight issues that residents have raised with staff as well.
Okay. Thank you so much, Jonathan. Appreciate it. So, the ordinance that I had, that I looked up and read, I think was incorporated in 1999 that we're talking about. So, I guess it is time for us to update it a little bit. I do, I, I wanted to say that when my husband and I moved to Laguna Niguel, we started driving over from Riverside County to Orange County because we thought we were going to live in Irvine. And slowly but surely, we started looking at signs and we started driving and going and going and we ended up in Laguna Niguel. And once we got here, we fell in love with this city and that's how we ended up living here. So, I, I empathize with a lot of you for the fact that you are actually making some points that make sense, that people do follow those signs and that they get to their place that they're going to get to. I'm, I'm pleased to hear that our staff has been working with all of you and I, I think the most important thing that we could do to work well together as a city and as Realtors, I was paying attention and it looked like, I think, all the speakers except one gave a Laguna Niguel resident address. So, that means you're not just Realtors doing business in our city, but you actually are homeowners that live in our city. So, you obviously love this city and you care about it too. So, with that, I would like to see maybe some kind of a forming of maybe a group of the Realtors that could work with our city staff to come up with a pilot program that will meet the needs of not just our city, but our Realtors. And thank you so much for the good work you do in our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Thank you, everyone, for coming to speak. I, I too was surprised. I got a call from Dorissey who, who obviously you all know. And when I found out there was additional enforcement going on, my first question was, why is there additional enforcement going on and what's changed? And it turned out, nothing had changed, but an enforcement officer had decided that that's on the books, so maybe we should enforce it. And I thought differently of that. Let me be clear, I want to make sure we get this right and for you and for us and for the city and for the residents. And this is one of the best ideas of good governance I've seen, that before we make an ordinance or regulation, that we reach out to the community, the community reaches back to us, we work together, we come up with the right answer that everybody's happy with, and that we do that going forward. Because all the speakers who talked about property values and the city and its beautification and taxes and that's all exactly correct. We, we factor that into almost every decision we make, by the way, but it's especially true on this one. I made certain promises to the Orange County Realtors specifically regarding signs when I ran for office. They asked the question, what do I think about it? And I thought that it was very fair, the comments that you all said tonight are exactly the points that we need to make to ensure that your industry is protected and that our best interests of moving property is protected and it, it really benefits everybody. So, I'm a strong proponent of this. I think the pilot program is a great way to go. We're thinking about it before we legislate, which I swear they're going to kick us out of the council of governments if we keep doing this stuff the right way. So, so this is the right thing to do. I don't think there's much opposition to it, but I'm very proud of the industry and I want to thank you all for your support. To the extent that there, that there are bad actors and the, the people who pulled me aside that wanted to talk about this have mentioned that there are Realtors who are others who are selling homes that might be out of the, the usual and customary practices, I think this process will address that. I think we'll find them. I think we'll find a way to see what they're doing as well and we can also legislate around that as well. So, thank you very much and I look forward to working with staff and the Realtor community to, to get this one nailed down. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jennings? Hey, thank you, Mayor Davies. Well, thank you to all the Realtors who are here tonight. Greatly appreciate your participating in this process, but more importantly, for what you do in our community because you have many of the same goals that the city council does. And that's the quality of life in Laguna Niguel. And that's why you are working in Laguna Niguel and bringing people to our city. So, I always say, you know, it's the Realtors that your participation in our community, it adds to the vibrancy here and to the quality of life and making sure that Laguna Niguel lives up to the high standards that we want it to. So, thanks for being here. You know, all of you, in your comments, each and every one of you had an important part in what takes, what took place tonight because there was some common concerns that you had, but then also each of you had a unique perspective. And then I think that adds to the things that staff can take into consideration. So, I fully support the initiation of a pilot program. It is something that we should have done a long time ago. I know that this is something that has been of concern to Realtors and I appreciate all of you who have reached out to myself and to my council colleagues because we have been listening and the way that government works best is when it works with the residents and the business people in the community because it is your community too. So, thank you for being part of the process and I fully support this pilot program. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem Miniger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I totally agree with my colleagues. I think in our beautiful city, I know most of the Realtors sitting here, we all have common goals and objectives and that is to beautify, to keep the beauty of the city. But at the same time, your points are well taken. In my judgment, two signs is not sufficient and we want to make sure that we help you out. And I do advocate the pilot program. So, short to the point, I think this is a good start and we should form maybe some kind of committee or some kind of ad hoc, you know, comprised of Realtors, city staff, and maybe two elected officials so that we can work with you and we can come up with the best plans with the best color of the signs.[1514.01][1514.01](Laughter)
Well, with, with that finishing.
A little something for Chip out there.
Can I get a motion to prove the staff's recommendation?
Make a motion.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? Congratulations. All right, we're going to go back to the consent calendar. Well, now, item 1 through 10, are there any items that need to be pulled for comment or discussion?
None.
Okay. Can I have a motion to move?
I'll make a motion to move.
Oh.
You want to move? Yeah, go ahead. I'll move that we.
Got a first, got a second. On favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? Consent calendar moves. At this point, I'm going to hand this over to Mayor Protem and I'm going to step out and he's going to go into council comments.
Very good. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No, Mayor Protem.
Very good. The public comment section is closed. Let me start off with our police chief. Or maybe we go to the council first. Let me start with.
Okay. We'll do council. We'll just kind of do it in.
We're excited to talk about the things.
Well, no, no. We're just, okay. We'll do the rest in order, maybe. So, council reports, just two quick things. On February 20th, we had the ribbon cutting for Shark Bay, which is the street that leads into Niguel Hills Middle School. That was a great example of the youth in our community, the students working with their government to create something to benefit, to benefit all. So, I was just absolutely delighted to see our middle school students initiating that and going through the process on getting the street name changed. Junior Civic Workshop next week, next Tuesday at 6:30. The presentation will be by our Community Development Department and our Chamber of Commerce on how they work together to make Laguna Niguel the great place to live. So, thank you, Mayor Protem, and that's all for my comments.
Thank you. Then I go to Councilmember Sandy Rains.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a real quick comment about, I know that a lot of people may be concerned about coronavirus. We keep hearing a lot about it and I just wanted to say that, you know, the number one line of defense we have is protecting ourselves by making sure we wash our hands. If we're sick, we stay home and we're not around other people and just avoid any type of activity that can expose you to the elements when you know that people are sick. So, I guess the new thing is fist pumping, right? And maybe carry some hand sanitizer with you. Our city is cognizant of this and we are proactive, so you can rest assured that we are all safe here in Laguna Niguel. And in addition to that, I don't know how many of you were here earlier tonight, but you saw that the goats have finally come to Laguna Niguel. The kids were really enjoying it. I think it's going to have to be a tradition every time we have a vote center that we have the goats here for them to play. I think the parents really enjoyed that. And be looking for the goats. I'm going to just once again tell you where all they're going to be. They are being placed right now and so Golden Lantern by the fire station is one area. Kite Hill along Alicia Parkway, La Hermosa Park and La Vida Drive. And that's the Reef Note area near Chaparosa Park. So, there's four, just four areas where you'll be seeing the goats and they will be fenced in. And I asked, because somebody asked me this question about the coyotes getting to the goats. And so, they are fenced in, so they're not going to be running around. And apparently, they use special kind of dogs that protect them and they don't have problems with that. So, we're all good and it's going to be a goat year. All right.
Thank you.
One of the great disappointments of my month was I didn't get to go to the Shark Bay opening. So I was out of town that morning and it just completely bummed me out, but I was so happy to see the Laguna Hills kids and all the pictures that came out of that. And every time I drive down Golden Lantern, I smile a little bit extra just because it's kind of cool. So I like it a lot. It is cool. And very importantly, I wanted to welcome Eric Hendrickson, so our new finance director. Thank you so much for being here. We're so happy to have you here. We've, I think we've handed you the keys to something very special and very important and we really look forward to all that you have to do for our great cities. I just want to say welcome and thank you. And to our police and our sheriffs who are on the front line of not only the coronavirus, but the fires and the things that keep us safe all the time, just want to say thank you, a little extra thank you to the both of you all for your kind work, especially in these times. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. Well, I don't want to talk about the meetings that I attended. This coming Thursday, we are going to have a very big meeting in Los Angeles with Southern California Association of Governments called SCAG. During this upcoming meeting, we are going to be voting on the final decision that was made by the California State Department of Housing. And that's in reference to the final validation of allocation of Reno numbers, regional housing needs, assessment methodology. And as a representative for all the South Orange County coastal cities, including our beautiful city of Laguna Niguel, I can express my solid no vote because I'm going to be opposing whatever they are going to be coming up with for a couple of reasons. Number one is that our beautiful city is getting penalized by 501%, meaning that with the initial numbers that SCAG staff, which in my opinion did a superb job, we were allocated to have 181 housing units with the new numbers that it was initiated by Mayor of Riverside, Rusty Bailey, and Mayor of Los Angeles. They changed the whole game because more than 10 council members of City of Los Angeles showed up during the meeting, that they never show up, by the way. I always go there, they never show up. But everybody showed up and then they were able to align themselves with a bunch of cities in Riverside County, a bunch of cities in Los Angeles County, and a bunch of cities in San Bernardino County. And they voted basically in favor of changing the numbers. So the new numbers that we call them substitute motion is very detrimental to our great city because we are going to get penalized for no reasons. And the second city next to us that is going to be penalized is our neighboring city that I happen to represent on SCAG board, and that's the city of Alicia Viejo, that their numbers also would be going up by 580%. So from a number of 168 housing units, they have to go to 1,142. So that's the second city in South Orange County that is going to be impacted. And then I also represent City of Laguna Beach. They are going to be penalized by 609% because their requirement, the initial requirement was 55 units. Now they have to provide 390 units. Where are they going to build them? I have no idea. And they don't have any ideas either, by the way. So these three cities out of six cities are the ones that are getting penalized. Surprisingly, City of Dana Point that I represent, you know, the initial staff recommendation was 509 units. Now they're going to need 502 units. So they're getting a break of seven units. And also City of San Juan Cap that is going not to be hurt the way that we are going to be penalized. But what happened during the last vote, which it was back in 10/7/2019, all the Orange County delegations, including myself, we unanimously voted against, but we were overruled by the majority, which happened to be coming from a lot of other cities. By the way, a lot of other coastal cities in Los Angeles County, Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, Hermosa Beach, City of Malibu, I can go on and on and on, they voted the same way that we voted because they are getting penalized. There are a few small cities that surprisingly, they are going to be hurt the most. City of Cerritos, they are going to be hurt by 1,759%. So I don't know where they're going to be putting 1,950 units. That's why they are going to be filing a lawsuit and I believe, they told me that they've already filed a lawsuit. So, but I have no idea where they're going to get, what kind of resolution they're going to get because they're going to be obviously in minority. So that remains to be seen. And also City of San Marino, next to the City of South Pasadena, they are getting penalized pretty big. And also City of La Palma. Now, City of La Palma, 3,500% increase. These are real percentages, by the way. So that's why we protested McKinsey's report that Boston, you know, consulting firm that created the numbers, but at the end, the State of California Department of Housing, they said that they feel comfortable with the numbers. With my colleagues, we were in Sacramento, we echoed our frustration, myself included. But I don't think that we were able to do anything about it because we are definitely in minority because the governor is moving ahead with his plan, you know, that he's making a mandate for the state to build all those housing units. And by the way, City of Beverly Hills is another city that they are going to be hurt according to the mayor by $250 million because they have no spaces to build all those required new number of housing units. So that remains to be seen, how they are going to be settled at, with Southern California Association of Governments, which is the body that comprises all the 191 cities in Southern California and the State of California Department of Housing. It's going to be a very big, exciting meeting with the news media this upcoming Thursday. But again, our platform with all my colleagues that are coming from other cities in Orange County, we are going to be voting against whatever they are going to be coming up with. I don't see, I have not seen, I have not heard any resolution or anything on behalf of SCAG. Guess what? Because during the last official meeting that we had before the, which was the first public hearing, basically, the majority of the board members, RC, regional council members, voted in favor of the new numbers that would benefit all those cities, including City of Los Angeles, which is the biggest city of all. So with that, I don't have any other reports. I want to keep it short just to one item, which was a long one. Anyhow, okay. Yeah, it's a very good one for our area because housing, I know how critical it is, but that remains to be seen. I start out with our great police chief, Chief McDaniel.
I think tonight, Mayor Protem, thank you.
Very good. Our deputy city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. I just want to echo what Councilmember Rains was saying in regards to coronavirus and the spread of germs. The city is taking a proactive approach to releasing information to the public as well as to our staff. You can visit the city's webpage under the hot topics section and we're keeping the public and the staff up to date on all information from the CDC as well as from the county health agency. With that, we want to remind the public to avoid close contact with people who may be sick, to cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue and then throw that tissue away in the garbage, to avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth, to clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and surfaces, to stay home when sick except to get medical care, as well as to wash your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. So those are the top six tips as are recommended by the CDC. And I also want to, on a letter note, remind the public to spring forward this Sunday on March 8th with your calendars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our city attorney, Kevin Enos.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Protem. I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Our OCFA authority representative, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I won't bore everybody with the coronavirus. I think everybody's pretty much aware of what's going on out there. Just be safe and when in doubt, if you need assistance, call 911, we're there for you. Also, I would remind people right now, we had our first wildland fires of the season out in Riverside. We sent 10 engines in our helicopter. So I know it seems like it's off-season, but it's, wildland season is always on in Southern California, so practice safe fire practices. And then I would just like to let any residents that are interested, OCFA is having a girls' empowerment camp this weekend, both Saturday and Sunday, which is to expose teenagers 15 years and less to what OCFA has to offer and a potential career in the fire service. They can get more information at ocfa.org. As of yesterday, there were still a couple spots. So if they're interested, they can do that and that's both Saturday and Sunday this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Now we get into our new finance director. Welcome. The floor is yours. Actually, you can go over your, you know, your mini background.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, fellow council members. As Councilmember Jennings mentioned, this is really truly a gem of a city. Some of my background, I've been with the city of Placentia, La Habra Heights, and Los Alamitos. And by far, I can already tell, this is one of the best, well-run, most prolific cities to work for. Your residents are great, your staff is great, the council members, the commission members, all the committee members. Everybody here has been so nice and so welcoming and it's really truly a great place to be. I look forward to being a fiscally conservative steward of your money, presenting balanced budgets going forward, staying under contract or within the contract limits on all of our contracts going forward as well. So feel free to always reach out to me, either directly to me or through the city manager. I'll be always happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Sincere welcome. Thank you. Now, our city clerk, Madam Gomez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have nothing to report.
All right. Now we're getting into Parks and Rec Director Allison Giglio. She always has a report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I do not have a report tonight.
This is the first. This is the first time I've been in this council for quite a few years.
Thank you.
Very good. Now we get to Public Works Director Jackie Scott. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Public Works couldn't be more excited to have Eric come join the team in finance and[1713.63]